All right, I'll call this, uh, let me get the right one here. Meeting of the City of North Bend, regular work session. So many things.
For September ninth.
Yes. I understand that, but, okay, there it is. That's urban renewal.
Okay, you should have a joint.
It's joint.
We got in trouble last time when we didn't use the word joint.
Joint Urban Renewal and City Council Work Session Agenda for September ninth at four thirty. And Jessica would wanted to push number six and seven back until she shows up. Anybody have any problem with that?
Do not.
All right. Uh, guess what? Have a roll call first.
Counselor Jones, present. Counselor Hamilton.
Present.
Counselor President Garboden.
Present.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Nora.
Here, thank you.
Okay, then we go to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, go on to a presentation by Enterprise Fleet Management. Who's doing that?
So I'm going to make an initial introduction here. Normally Jeff Bridges, our finance director would do it. He's off today. Yesterday was his birthday, but he'll be back tomorrow. And so over the last several months, if you've seen in our city administrators' report, we've been evaluating how to maintain our fleet so that, thanks to all of the ARPA grant money, we have a great level fleet. We want to be able to maintain that and also meet the council goals, but also not be in a situation where we've depreciated the fleet so that you're only getting about $2,000 for a police car, or where we have high maintenance, or we're just simply out of technology. And so all of the departments have worked with Enterprise. We've done an exhaustive overview, and we'll have a brief presentation by Enterprise. Our actual goal is to save the city in excess of half a million dollars over the next five years by doing this. As disclosure, I've done this in two other cities where they've been Enterprise Fleet. There are our sister city and other cities in the area in the state that do this. And it is, um, sometimes they say, well, it's too good to be true. Well, that's because government and enterprise can get fleet purchasing of vehicles cheaper than you and I could ever manage to get. And then when they go, they know exactly when to sell them and recoup our cost and be able to put us in new vehicles and keep our cost and our equity in those vehicles high. And so with that, I want to go ahead and bring on our guests who are going to give a brief presentation of Enterprise. And then there are a couple pieces of legislation that are attached that if the council agrees and wants to take move, you'll hear about those when we start to talk about our regular meeting because there are contracts that our city attorney has already reviewed. We've gone back and forth. We're finalizing all of that and then basically authorizing me to execute, move forward with this engagement. So with that, welcome Andrea and, uh, is it Tanner as I recall? Is that, is?
Yep.
Okay, hi Tanner. And so Andrea, I don't know if you or Tanner are taking the floor, but you've got the floor.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And quick question, am I able to share my screen at all? Or does everybody just have a printed copy of the presentation I provided?
I think you can do both. We've got a printout copy, but I think she can share the screen.
Okay, perfect. It was showing as disabled, but I can see that I can do it now.
Yep.
Excellent. So can everybody see the screen, City of North Bend?
Yep.
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, perfect. Well, first off, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you so much for your time today. My name's Andrea Biddle. I'm with my colleague today, Tanner Hudson, and we're really excited to be here to help present a fleet management solution for the city. So to back up a little bit on who Enterprise is, is we are a third generation family-owned business that started in 1957. We do make it a priority to provide local representation, which is why if City of North Bend decided to partner with Enterprise, your local office would be out of Tuolatin. Apologies, we couldn't be there in person today. You might be able to hear it in my voice. Whole office got COVID, but we really appreciate your flexibility with this. All right. So over the past few months, I've had the opportunity to meet with a couple of different members of the leadership team to determine where is the city at and how are we going to be able to help. So within those meetings, the city members and I were able to uncover a few key objectives. The first one is reduce the overall age of the fleet. Now, the reason why this is so important is not only is it going to reduce the operational expenses of maintenance and fuel, but also it's going to be much safer for your city employees to be running newer vehicles because of updated safety standardizations. So for example, the vehicles we're recommending for the city will come with safety standardizations like a backup camera, forward collision warning, hill descent control. And if these safety standardizations can prevent even just one accident, that can come as a cost savings itself for the city. What was also important for the city members is increased visibility for reporting on vehicles. Now, vehicles are a very major expense, and it's really important to have a system in place to attract these expenses so that way the city is able to have all of the information they need in a given year to budget correctly, as well as create a replacement plan to ensure safety, sustainability, and gain cost control of the fleet. With the plan that we're recommending, we estimated savings of $543,000. And I'll make sure to get into how exactly we got to that savings. So on this next page will be some of the partners we work with in Oregon and Washington. Now, what I've found in working with municipalities is it's really important to show an operational and a financial benefit, but more importantly, to be able to provide the municipalities that this is a partnership that has worked for them. So that's why I included this page, as well as everybody should have received a letter of reference from Jackson County as well. But we talked about some of the people that we partner with. This next page is going to go over exactly what we do to help them out, and we just call this our Wheel of Service. So one thing to keep in mind is everything on this wheel is something that somebody within your team is having to handle one of these things today. And one of the benefits of partnering with Enterprise is all of those things that are time-consuming. The city, um, it doesn't want to have to do, like the due diligence process or taking a vehicle to auction. We are actually going to take that off your plate. So for example, let's say that the city wants a Ram 1500. What I'm going to do on my hand, my end, is I'm going to handle the due diligence process. I'm going to take care of specing that vehicle correctly, ordering it for you. We offer a private line of credit to help the city with cash flow. I'm going to handle license, title, registration on that vehicle, as well as if there's any outfit necessary, I'm going to make sure to have that be completed so that way when the vehicle delivers to you, it is ready to go. Now, whoops, apologies. Sorry, very sensitive mouse. All right. So while you have that vehicle during its lease term, in regards to maintenance, we actually fix and budget the maintenance expense on it. Operationally, it looks exactly like what you're doing today. You still use the local vendors that you have. Only difference is now it's a fixed expense per month. In regards to fuel, we partner with WEX, and for that, it's going to look just like a credit card for the city. The only difference and benefit is going to be that we track all of the fuel expenses on the vehicle, as well as we'll track the odometers on it as well. So when it comes time for that vehicle to be maintained, we will actually send push notifications, meaning that the city won't have to have one of their employees do that. We'll be doing the follow-up for you. As far as risk management, telematics, Jeff had mentioned those were things that he wanted to continue the process of what the city is doing today. But as we go further along the road, if that's something that you guys would look, like to look into, we do offer multiple programs for that. And when you go to resell the vehicle, we will pick up that vehicle on your behalf. We charge a flat fee of $400 and we sell it on your behalf, and the city gets to have 100% of the equity back to them. Now, we already touched a little bit on maintenance, so I won't spend too much time on the slide. Reason why I wanted to include it is on top of having the full maintenance program for any vehicle leased through us, we also offer a bridge program for the city-owned vehicles. So operationally, it looks exactly the same. We're still offering the same tracking. The only difference is it's going to be pay-as-you-go, but we'll still monitor it on your behalf. So we've touched on a lot of operational stuff. Now we're going to go into why financially this makes sense for municipalities and how exactly the program saves you money. And really what it's all about is establishing an effective vehicle lifecycle. Now, what Enterprise knows about operating 2 million vehicles is that there are three main expenses associated with running a vehicle. The first one is depreciation, meaning how much value is that vehicle losing over time, as well as fuel and maintenance, meaning the longer you hold on to that vehicle, the less it's worth, the more fuel degradation takes into effect, as well as maintenance really starts to become a roll of the dice. So what Enterprise does is finds the sweet spot of the optimal time to replace where that vehicle still worth something. Now, not a lot of people are able to operate their fleet the same way that Enterprise does outside of municipalities. And the reason for that is as a government entity, you're able to get a significant incentives and very strong buying power off the vehicle. You go low mileage, so when we go time to sell it, you're able to essentially sell it to a retail market and really reduce the amount of depreciation on the vehicle. To show an example of how we're able to do that, I included a current client result for City of St. Helens. Reason why I chose them is they're very similar fleet size to where you're at today, as well as they run very similar vehicles. So on this page, you'll see three different vehicle types. First one I'll run through is a Dodge Durango. So this was a pursuit vehicle. We purchased it for them in 2019. With their incentives and added discounts, we were able to acquire it for them for $32,000. They held on to the vehicle for 50 months, drove a total of 51,000 miles. And at the end of that term, we sold it on their behalf for $13,000. Keep in mind, this was a pursuit vehicle, so we sold it with all the holes, all the outfit taken out as is. And so during that time, they were able to run and operate this vehicle for $382 a month. And the vehicles that I'll be recommending for you guys to replace today is more in line with the half-ton pickup truck and the compact pickup truck. So I want to make sure to include those examples as well. So for the Ram 1500, we purchased this vehicle for them in 2019 for $27,000. Forty-eight months later, we were able to sell it on their behalf for basically the same price, which really meant that they only had to pay $29 a month for this vehicle. Same thing with the Ford Ranger, only having to pay $84 a month for this vehicle. All right. Well, next what I wanted to talk about is where the city is at today and what my recommendation is for replacement. So what you're looking at is a high-level overview of the city fleet. Today, you have 43 vehicles within your fleet. The total fleet value is $804,000. And most importantly, this is going to break down how many vehicles that you have within a given year. So one thing that Jeff and I were able to recognize is you've certainly been able to get a lot of vehicles in the past few years from grants, but there's also still a significant amount of vehicles that are 10 years or older. And the reason why we highlight this is if there's any vehicles that are causing you headache in maintenance or driver downtime, it's most likely going to be these vehicles. And the concern that we found in having this many vehicles be 10 years or older is it creates this bubble where if there's not a proactive plan to replace them now, it's just going to be a larger expense down the road. So this is where we get into the cost savings. What Jeff had mentioned as a financial goal for the city is to remain as debt-free as possible, but on the other side of it, he didn't want to have 100% of funds tied up in a depreciating asset, which is why the recommendation I'm bringing forward for the city is to replace nine of your oldest trucks with 50% down. So on the left-hand side, you'll see a breakdown based off the data I receive from the city with an average budget year being $267,130. On the right-hand side, you'll see what my recommendation is. I know it's a lot of numbers, but I'll focus on what's most important. So the first year, what you can expect is a down payment of $208,000. Remember, we're doing 50% down. And within the first year, average lease payments of $49,000. Now, keep in mind, we're going to be selling these nine vehicles on your behalf, so you'll be receiving $77,000 back the first year, meaning your year-one fleet budget would be $263,000. So we're able to replace nine of your oldest units and still have it be $4,000 cheaper than an average annual budget year. This is also going to break down the years two through five fleet budget, which will be significantly reduced because you will no longer have that down payment for a total savings over five years of $543,000. The next page is going to specify exactly the nine vehicles we're targeting, their current market value, the costs that you can see within the 50% down, monthly lease charge, full maintenance program, and then the estimated equity back in these nine vehicles at the end of their term, which is at $215,000. So Enterprise has been competitively awarded a cooperative purchasing agreement through Sourcewell. What this means for the city is that it has piggybackable language so that way you're able to utilize this for your due diligence process, as well as you get discounted rates for services. With a partnership, you also get a local dedicated account team, including a client strategy manager. They are going to be in charge of the ongoing strategy for the city moving forward, as well as an account fleet coordinator, who's going to be your day-to-day contact. And lastly, one thing our clients have really loved about our program is you get access through our client website. So this means you'll have one location for the entire fleet for the city. It's going to provide tracking on how much you spend on maintenance, how much you spend on fuel in a year, as well as you'll get real-time alerts on any vehicles incoming and the process of being sold or that are in need of maintenance. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for your time. I'd like to now open it up to any questions that the council members may have.
I have some questions.
Yes, please.
So, um, there's a bunch. What is telematics?
Yeah, so it provides data tracking on the vehicles. So we specifically partner with Geotab. If the city decided in the future they'd like to move forward, it's just a device that provides real-time tracking of odometers, as well as driver safety, so making sure that drivers are wearing seat belts and stuff like that.
Um, where does the insurance of the vehicles fall in all of this?
Yeah, so you would still use the same insurance that you're using today.
So that's still on the city? So are we expect a little bit of increase on our insurance because we're replacing vehicles more often?
Actually, you'd be replacing them with safety, more safe vehicles, so we anticipate actually a decrease. Um, newer, more safer vehicles actually would reduce your overall insurance cost.
Okay.
And also by standardizing a lot of the vehicles which we have with the lighter color is actually helped reduce our, uh, overall cost as well. Because they're the safer, brighter vehicles.
And what, what is the number of vehicles for police and fire vehicles in this? Just out of curiosity.
Most of these on the list for replacement were up to 43.
Both, actually. That's great.
The chiefs, you want to say how many vehicles you have respectively?
That would be under this.
Oh, I can't answer that. So the vehicles that we're looking to target are going to be a part of the Public Works. The police department, when I last checked, they, oh, I mean, I think that it was like 99% of their vehicles were five years or newer. So they're actually already in a pretty healthy fleet situation.
I think most of these are like Public Works and.
Okay. And then our total fleet across all departments is 43 vehicles at this point?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So the 208,000, 208, that's only 50% down, right?
That's correct.
You're talking 416,000?
Correct. So yes, as, as, if we wait to purchase these over time, yes, you're actually going to pay more than that amount. Um, but yes, that is the 50%. And what Jeff is trying to do is keep the budget predictable and flat. He doesn't want ebbs and flows. He wants to be able to know that this is going to be built in so that he can forecast and know what it's going to be versus a catastrophic failure or, oh gosh, we have to replace this vehicle.
And there's certain, there's, so this is not going to include the huge custom vehicles like the fire engines, or is it?
Um, no.
This is just things they can buy? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, you're, you'll have a client strategy manager each year that'll put together an analysis just like this, like Andrea put together, in advance of your budgeting season. Just, it's flexible, but we would help you in developing your budget each year.
Thank you.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, the department heads know that this is a recommendation. If they choose to hold on to the vehicle, they just simply have to justify it to finance because finance is looking at cost versus expense versus expenditures for the overall savings to the taxpayer, so.
Are the nine that were picked the oldest of the, of the 17?
Yes.
Or just the most questionable?
Or, or potentially have the highest use. And so we're looking at overall recovery expense for those vehicles.
Is there a plan to the other eight or?
Um, not in year one, but yeah, through, through the initial five in order to roll out for the first five years. And so the department heads provided the data and then collaboratively, if I'm not mistaken, actually have worked to identify with either Jeff, or Jeff has worked through Enterprise to choose the ones that made the most sense. But again, it goes back to the department heads. It's their budget. Um, but again, it's those tough questions that the council will have to ask because you're getting professional advice from, from an outside source that deals with, what'd they say, 2, 2 million? How many vehicles? 2 million?
Over 2 million, yes.
I want to be cognizant of the time. The council can ask questions, but we've exceeded our 15 minutes for presentation. And so are there other specific questions? Or do you want to extend? That's up to you.
I have a question. So we're, we're going to more of a lease system than a purchase system? Is that correct?
We will actually, it will be our equity in those. So, so if you look at the curve, this is an equity where the goal is ultimately the equity will be the city's. So we are not leasing all of our vehicles out. We, we actually will have ownership of those vehicles.
Yeah, it is very different than a typical dealership lease. There's no mileage fees, no wear and tear fees, and you have rights to ownership, the early exit or late exit. Um, it's just more of a finance down to a residual. That's why it's called an open-end lease.
You know, this one is 2009. It's got 18,000 miles on it, and it's 15 years old. We're putting just a little over 1,000 miles a year on it. So there, there's a question there, like, do we, do we even need it? Or do we need to replace it? Because if it hangs on another 15 years, it would have 36,000 miles on it. You know, just, I don't know what you guys are using for, just, you know.
Yeah. Which vehicle is that? Do you all know?
I'm not sure. The street department just got a brand-new truck, which is their only one that's less than 10 years old.
Andrea, can you bring up that list of vehicles real quick?
This was 2009.
Okay, you said it was 2009 with 18,000 miles on it. Yeah, I mean, that, that's a good point. I know one of the things that a client strategy manager moving forward is going to look at any underutilized units. Um, for this one in particular, I can certainly talk with the Public Works team, and if it's something where it doesn't need a replacement, then yeah, we don't have to replace it. We can just sell it.
So do you know which vehicle this is? Do you recognize that?
The 2009 Ford F-250. Is that what you were looking at?
Is it?
I mean, it's 13 years old, 18,000 miles. It's still right, still brand-new, yeah.
Yeah, you'd want to take advantage of the fact that it is such low miles and the equity in it. Um, it, it's not just miles that we take into account, so it's age and condition as well. So if you, if you use it, then let's replace it. If you don't use it, then we would just sell it and you get all the equity back.
So basically, we would maintain ownership of the vehicles that we have, but if we were to get new ones, that would be on more of a lease situation? Is that accurate?
They're just not acting as a finance.
Purchase?
No.
Okay.
They will be our vehicles, okay? And so as long as we stay with Enterprise and we continue to make our hybrid lease agreements, we're gaining equity. And so as we buy and sell these vehicles, that equity grows to the city over time. And so there's an actual equity analysis that, that can be shown. And so yes, the, the goal is to maintain the fleet, sell vehicles, and bring in as much equity as opposed to having the ongoing incrementing cost and expense that we normally would have.
Which department of ours has, the city department, has mostly been dealing with all the fleet? Has it been individual departments of their?
Everyone takes care of their own.
Yeah, it's been hard. I'm sure it's been.
Yes, there's no.
Draining of resources or that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't think what's counted here is perhaps a savings and staff time.
Yeah, the negotiated savings, all of that cost, um, you know, having data across the entire fleet. There's a lot of reasons why folks go. Um, and it doesn't always make sense. Um, but as I said, I, I've got past cities where it did make sense, others that it did not make sense because it really goes down to the, you know, size of the fleet, whether or not you are, are in a financial situation where you can actually make those monthly payments and aggregate it, which, which we are already paying that, which to us would be a reduction, so.
So all the staff is agree this is a good idea. Tell them.
Well, the example you weren't even talking about, David, was the last, we just bought a truck for the street department. After council approved it, it took us 11 and a half months to get that vehicle.
Oh, right.
So you're paying another 11 and a half months of maintenance and whatnot till you replace that vehicle. One, I'm sure they can get them within six months. But, uh, and that was after, so it was over a year from the time you got quotes. You approved it in September, we got it in August, 16 years or something like that.
It, it was kind of a funny ha-ha because when they brought me the paperwork to sign, I was like, when did? I was like, when did you buy a new vehicle? Then I realized we had bought it in September of last year. If you remember, when we were going out to buy certain vehicles, we actually bought several local because they just had what they had. And you may recall, for instance, like, folks like us, when we went, for instance, for a couple of Fords, because we didn't have Fords, we actually, they had reduced buying power by fifty percent. Well, fifty percent of nothing was actually a negative nothing. And so it's things like that where Enterprise can get you the vehicles a whole lot faster because they're dealing in that situation, whereas we've had to go locally and not necessarily get what we needed, so.
Let's wrap it up. I remember getting my Dodge truck bumper replaced, but I had to pull it myself because it was the vehicle that was going to be jaws of life. And I gave a hundred bucks, but I had to pull it myself, and that was hard. Lock the gate when you're done.
So thank you for starting the discussion. Sir Council President, I have some work obligations that I need to attend to. I know that we have exceeded our time for the work session item. What is the next step if people still have questions so that we can get to our other business? Do we, do we want to go ahead and discuss them now? Should the people who have questions email them into you? How soon do you need to make a decision?
Well, you are set to potentially vote on this tomorrow, so that's why your work session is taking place.
So it did look like Councilor Jones had a couple burning questions. Is it something, because we do need to be mindful of everything else that's on the agenda, are they like kind of quick questions? Or do they, you think they deserve time now or an email? You think you can do it under three minutes?
So I think it would be useful to have on the public record the nuts and bolts around both using local sources and having Enterprise managing that work. If I heard correctly, understood that you're still using local sources in some way, but what we're getting is the buying and selling and networking prop of Enterprise. That's the gift. That's really where the savings is. It's in staff time and it's in being able to negotiate lower prices. I'd like you to have, give me some more details on local sourcing, like our Ford dealer. Will our Ford dealer lose all of our business and we just go somewhere else? Or do we go to Ford and say, here's our, here's our connection? Hook us up.
I'll try and answer quickly for you. So we'll still use your local Ford dealer when we're acquiring vehicles quickly. Even if we order through Ford directly, it'll still go through your Ford dealer, so they still get a cut. We'll use your local maintenance vendors, local fuel vendors, and you'll have a local team here in Oregon. We're just plugging you into Enterprise's corporate infrastructure as far as oversight, management, buying power, things like that.
Thank you. Perfect. I'm satisfied.
Good? Okay, all right. Well, if there isn't any other questions, then we can go ahead and move on. You should, sure you don't want to?
Thanks, Andrea. Thanks, Tanner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So then, does that take us to number five, which is the North Bend Land Bank Information Session?
Yes, Bobby will be presenting with an assist of Derek. And I believe they have PowerPoint presentations, is that correct?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So tonight, we, and by we I mean Bobby, have a short informational session for you tonight. No options necessary at this point. We're just looking to share some research that Bobby's been conducting regarding our land bank project. We came to you about almost exactly a year ago, pursuing a grant. We didn't get that grant. We did find funding elsewhere. And tonight, Bobby McClanahan, our permit tech and assistant planner, is going to be sharing this brief presentation with you regarding her research into landbanks. And go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Derek. So for those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Bobby McClanahan, and I am the permit technician and assistant planner for the city of North Bend. And as Derek said, the city administrator, and he went out for, and received monies to help research, creating a North Bend Land Bank Authority that possibly other cities could use to create their own landbank authorities. So it could be, you know, possibly used as a model. And when I read about this project in the city administrator's report back in July, I excitedly expressed my interest in helping with the project, and they graciously accepted me as a team member. And then I've been tasked with researching landbank authorities. And this presentation is a summary of the research progress. And one of those things is, what is a landbank? A landbank is a public entity or a nonprofit organization that's legally isolated from the city, and it's created to acquire, hold, manage, rehabilitate, or redevelop vacant, abandoned, and deteriorated properties in order to put them back to productive use for the community benefit, and to promote economic development, increase affordable housing, stabilize housing opportunities, and increase property values. And these landbanks can apply for and receive grant monies. They can accept donations and extinguish liens and clear the title. And they can develop or hold properties, negotiate purchases and sales, rehabilitate or demolish blighted properties, and they can repurpose property to create green spaces and pocket parks. And there are hundreds of landbanks all across the United States. Most are located back east. They're in the south and the Midwest, but there's very few of them along the west coast. Jonesboro, Arkansas, Windsbury, Connecticut, and Fort Scott, Kansas are three examples of successful municipal landbanks. And I'll tell you a little bit about each one of those. Jonesboro, Arkansas, which is the largest city in Arkansas, developed the second landbank in the state in December of 2017. They have a nine-member board that's appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council. Their properties are donated, and the city buys properties with grants and other funds each year. And business developers, businesses and developers partner with the landbank to improve those properties so that they could be put back on the tax rolls. And Waterbury, Connecticut, which is known as the Brass City for its brass production, established the Waterbury Land Bank in 2021. They have a seven-member board that's appointed by the mayor and a board of aldermen, and it's made up of business professionals, deputy chief of police, nonprofit leaders in the community. And one of their first property purchases was ten city parcels to be converted back to tax generating properties. And they recently were awarded a $100,000 grant from the Webster's Bank. And Fort Scott, Kansas, which is named for General Winfield Scott, established the Fort Scott Land Bank back in 2018. Their seven-member board of trustees is made up of Fort Scott City Commission, Bourbon County Commissioners, County Regional Economic Development Board of Directors, three individuals that represent the banking, developer, and real estate professions, and one member at large, all of whom are appointed by the Fort Scott City Commission. Their current landbank inventories, Jonesboro, Arkansas, has fifteen. Waterbury, Connecticut, ten currently on their books. And Fort Scott, Kansas, has twenty-seven. And these properties, again, are acquired through donation, revitalization and other grants, lien foreclosures, transfers from other government organizations, and in some cases, purchases with monies from city's general fund. And then the building on the right in this slide is a property that was donated to the Fort Scott Land Bank back in 2021. Historically, there were businesses on the street level with apartments and offices above and below. And these landbank properties that are held or purchased or donated are purchased by individual homeowners or the general public, developers for profit and nonprofit, government organizations, corporations, and businesses. These and other landbanks are successful because they are adaptable in order to meet the community needs, align with the city's policies and goals, they're transparent, have community engagement, participation, and support. And they've also developed strategic partnerships with other community organizations and local governments. So now we're going to talk about Oregon law and landbank authorities, my research, and some information that I gleaned from our city administrator and our city planner. Back in 2015, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 2734, authorizing local governments to create landbank authorities with the purpose of acquiring and remediating brownfield properties without the liabilities associated with these properties. HB 2734, which is codified under ORS 465.600 through 621, enables local governments to create landbank authorities through resolution or ordinance for the purpose of acquiring, rehabilitating, rehabilitating, redeveloping, reutilizing, restoring brownfield properties that are within the geographic boundaries over which the local government has jurisdiction with the goal of returning them to productive use for community. Under ORS 285A.185, brownfield properties are defined as properties that have or are perceived to have environmental contamination. And a good example of a brownfield property is the Old Bay Cleaners Building that's located at 1858 Union Avenue. So our project next steps in phases one and two, the North Bend Land Bank Authority's project staff will be continuing the research on landbanks and identify available brownfield properties that are located within our city limits or our jurisdiction. We're going to, we plan to hold community engagement meetings so that we can gather input, gain community support, identify potential board members, and discuss goals and objectives. We'll consult and engage legal counsel that are experienced in landbanking and brownfield redevelopment. We'll begin using, utilizing grant funds and develop the draft NBLBA Business Plan and Resolutions for Board of Directors' Appointment and Initial Staffing, collaborate with legal counsel to prepare the draft ordinance for the creation of the North Bend Land Bank Authority. And in phases three and four, project staff will present the draft ordinances and resolutions to the city council for consideration and approval, present identified and vetted potential board member candidates to the city council for approval and appointment to the NBLBA board, set up the NBLBA office and establish administrative procedures, begin the acquisition of potential brownfield sites, conduct environmental assessment and due diligence on any of those acquired properties, research and secure additional funding by applying for grants and loans to help support acquisition and remediation, develop partnerships with private developers, community, and other local government organizations, develop RFPs for redevelopment projects and solicit proposals from developers, establish a metrics for success that can be used for tracking progress, provide regular updates to the city council and the community. So our NBLBA project team members are our city administrator, David Milliron, Ralph Dunham, the public works director, Derek Payne, our city planner, and myself. And I provided some links to the research materials that I have been reviewing, other helpful information, as well as ORS 465. And so I'd just like to say thank you to the city council for allowing me to present this presentation and to my team members for their support.
And just a couple of things that I'd like to tack on. The housing, so NBLBA, North Bend Land Bank Authority, by statute, we have to name it something conspicuous where it's easy to understand what it is, what it does. So that's why we have went with such a creative name. The North Bend Land Bank Authority is backed by our Housing Production Strategy, which you all adopted, voted to adopt in May of 2023. That was, you know, one of the recommendations for generating more affordable housing, more productive properties, or putting them back on the tax rolls. And so it's some, one of the things we've identified internally as a priority, as well as having our external consultant from that project come out and say, hey, this is something that you should work on. So as Bobby mentioned, it supports development and redevelopment. Like I said, getting stuff back on the tax rolls, that's always good for North Bend, and getting these, some of these derelict properties that we've talked about to be productive again in terms of not just generating tax revenue, but creating housing options. Also mentioned by Bobby, these landbanks are legally isolated from the city. They can acquire, manage, and dispose of property. They have an independent board that is voted, I believe the first one is appointed, and then after that, it's voted on. And then there's an independent executive director, very similar to how the city of North Bend operates. You know, there is the board, and then there's the executive director who manages day-to-day. And so it'll be a very similar entity. And that is landbanks from us.
I have one question.
Great.
So currently, we are just in the planning phase of this, correct?
Correct.
So we're like in phase one or like one plus currently? Because we mentioned Bay Cleaners, but Bay Cleaners is not part of the landbank yet.
Correct.
It could be though, potentially.
Yeah, so the landbank doesn't exist yet.
Yes.
But it certainly could be identifiable property by the landbank to be acquired and managed and disposed of and whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
I think the Bay Cleaners was shown primarily because we had an assessment done under the brownfield state program. We did receive funding for visitor information center. We received money from our annex. The Bay Cleaners actually was incredibly clean.
I just don't want people to think it exists while we're out there yet.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess that was my next, my thought was, this sounds like a lot of staffing that, and I'm just curious about, would all, would most of this fall under current city staffers in the end, or at least initially?
Well, so initially, getting this started, it's really a land use planning task, right? And so that's why I'm involved. That's why we brought Bobby in to be involved. And so initially, yes. Long-term, the goal is to have this be self-sufficient. And so once it stood up by, you know, once it stood up by ordinance resolution, then we are hoping that it becomes self-sustaining and takes up less and less to eventually zero staff time, city staff time.
And we don't, and Bay Area Cleaners is not a brownfield?
It is not. I only use that as an example of a potential brownfield site.
That's great. I just made sure I got that right.
It was cleaned up prior. It did go through abatement prior to our acquisition.
Yes.
And so we did go and do all of our due diligence, contacted the U Brownfield State everything. And so we didn't have to apply for any grants because that one was already cleaned up.
And legislatively, the definition says real or perceived contamination. Dry cleaners are notorious for being dirty sites. We're, you know, blessed that that was not. But notoriously, they are. And so that's perceived contamination meeting criteria.
My question would be, are there, are there areas of town that are not developing because of known or perceived areas of contamination? And you don't have to answer that specifically, but just, we know of areas that aren't developing because there is, you know, gas station, buried tanks that have leaked, that kind of thing, or anything else?
Anecdotally, I mean, you know, you look at a burned-down structure, right? A house that was built in the 1950s and burned down, for example. That's a perceived contamination, right? There could be lead, there could be asbestos, there could be any number of things. It could be an underground storage tank. And so absolutely, there's, there's this thought that, okay, if I get in there, if I buy this property and get in there, what am I getting into? I don't really know. And so there is a perceived contamination for some of these properties.
What about vacant land like the North White area that is, I'm sure is multiple ownerships and nothing really has been built here? I've lived here about twenty years now, and I haven't really seen anything be developed there. Jordan Cove was going to put housing, but that didn't happen. And, I mean, is there anything in our, in our industrial areas where things are not being developed because of? where things are not being developed because of perceptions of?
Potentially, I mean, that's a, it's, it's a challenging one because it's more of a private, like that specific example is a private property issue of, does the owner want to sell it and be productive with it? Or do they want to just keep paying the low taxes on it? And so I, I haven't spoken to a developer about that site specifically, so I don't have any good data for you. But I hear where you're coming from.
But we're looking at things that are in multiple tax rezoning, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, that's good, thanks.
No other questions on this now? All right, thank you.
Thanks Bobby, thanks Eric.
All right, number six on the agenda is agenda item special called Youth Council Meeting Discussion. And this is something that I asked to put on the work session. So one of our council goals was to, two years ago, to figure out how to either have a youth advisory council or to do some things to get the students more involved. And through discussions that I've had with the principal at the high school and the superintendent and some of the civics teachers, we've tossed around the idea for, actually, I've talked about it for a couple of years, to figure out a way to have a council meeting at the high school. And I know probably would be difficult to have everybody's schedules work, but if we could at least get a majority of the councils to really show the students a beginning to end council meeting, tie it around maybe the subjects that are happening with the teachers who are teaching, you know, government classes, and have it be really student focused. So like, for example, if we were to be able to do something soon, we could tie in what's happening with Airport Heights Park redevelopment. They have a survey that, they just had a big event over at the Airport Heights Park, and they were having people fill out the surveys. And I was like, gosh, this is a perfect example of how we could get students and youth feedback. And so I wanted to, you know, bring it back to you guys here tonight to see, just kind of get an idea if we were able to do something like this and have a council meeting, you know, probably something like in the gym or the, maybe the Hall of Champions, so that you could have some of these students, student government and classes that are interested in it, but then also have it be where it would be open to public if anybody else wanted to come. And have various kind of specific youth-driven items. So maybe some information about what's happening with our Parks Master Plan, things that are going over at the Airport Heights Park, and then having some students maybe participate in public comment. Probably to get the most involvement with the students. And again, there's a lot of kind of moving parts to make something like this happen, but I wanted to gain enough, see if there's enough interest from everybody and who would be able to do something like a 11:30 to 12:15 meeting on a Thursday. Or if that's, because I was kind of looking at the timeframes of when it would work best with the students and kind of lunch hour, when those classes are, and it would probably be like a Thursday mid-morning with those, you know, it would, it would end up being a special called meeting. And just kind of wanted to get your guys' thoughts on that and see if there's other things that you, if we did something like this, you wouldn't, what I have learned with working with the high school students and really even the college students, under 50 minutes is the best, right? So you wouldn't want it to have, we would want to have enough items so it felt like a full council meeting, so they can see city government in action. But, you know, but keep it pretty basic. So I'd like to hear your guys' thoughts.
I think that's a big ask. I, I think what would be more appropriate would be like mock trial, mock council meeting, or, you know, maybe something, if you think that there's something they're interested in city business, then a few of us who can figure out how to be there, come and discuss what it's like, or come and discuss the process. But I think having it, all of the details that need to be strictly complied to for a public meeting for council is a big ask.
Counselor Hamilton, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, if you can make, I mean, I'd participate if you can make it happen.
We do, I'll participate. I'm just saying, all of the nuts and bolts to actually have it be an official meeting, that's a big ask.
Could it be a town hall, like?
Yeah, we do it.
Could it be a town hall, but like related to maybe volunteerism or?
Yeah, I think one of the objectives was for the students to actually see city government and what public comment looks like, what the actual, kind of the whole process of an actual council meeting.
Airport Heights is none of our purview.
Right, but it would be, it's things that are happening in the community. So for example, when they come here and do presentations, that's, I was trying to think of, and it doesn't have to be that. I was just thinking of things that were.
If we're trying to pull off a city council meeting externally, it should be something that is tied to North Bend. I mean, that's the airport market, that airport market.
Details, details. It could be the second Saturday.
I'm open to all suggestions.
Well, the second Saturday, like cleanup of parks, like if their, if their parents know about it or they know about it, they could go and help, kind of like beautification of, like, that exists. And again, do they know that that exists? And again, it becomes a question of under 18 questions. But again, is it something that they could bring their family to? Or like, what, what does that entail? So it could be, I was thinking more of like volunteerism and like, yeah, the beginnings of that potentially of, of, of just, I get, again, there are rules about under 18, but like, if their parent came or they were interested, like, do they know that there are volunteer options? And are there volunteer options?
I mean, I, I think it's, I, I think that the average person, including myself, doesn't know enough about, or didn't until I got into this, know about how a lot of our laws work that seem very contrary. They're not, this isn't a natural relationship. It's not, you don't ask questions the same way. You don't, there's a whole palm that is required.
That is one of the reasons why I would like to have them see.
That's a great reason, that's a great reason to have more education. But the requirements on everybody, not us, right? Not even if we can make time, but everybody else to make this work is a lot. It's too hot. So why not do something in the middle? Why not have, why not have interested people, you know, come in, you know? We can throw, you and I can throw together a list of things that would be interesting to talk about and, you know, get some perspective on.
You could do a mock, uh, city council meeting, or we could get us a heated debate and do a zone.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's interesting.
We have enough heated debates, I don't need any more. Not heated, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can.
I wouldn't expect all the department heads to come to this meeting.
It doesn't, it's city business, and you know, I think, I, I just, I think it's too much to have an official thing. But I think a mock one, that's, that's interesting.
That would be a nice trend to set.
Counselor Nordoff?
I think it'd be a good idea, and I thought that one thing that might be on the agenda just for information, the letter that you are writing to the state board on the Pony Creek Trail or whatever, that goes right by the high school. That might be something that would catch the kids' interest. It's central to the city. It was in the 1999 Parks Master Plan as an item. There's like 10 pages of items in the previous Parks Master Plan, and that is one of them. And we could so, show continuity and how long it takes to move something to fruition. So I'm behind it, I think it's a good idea.
Let me ask our city administrator this. So I am hearing Counselor Nordoff, and I'm hearing Counselor Hamilton and Jonesy. He said he would participate, but you're concerned about the ask on staff.
I don't, I don't think it should be official business in any way. I think it's got to be a mock something.
Okay, what, let me ask the city administrator. If we were able to, there are still some things here that I would need to discuss with the people who are teaching the class and things like that, as far as like, when, where, how, and what would be on the agenda. If we were to move forward with something like this, and I had four counselors that would be able to go, what, what are we looking at for like staff time? We would know we would have 24 hours of public posted.
Nothing, it's all ceremonial. You guys aren't taking any official city action, city business. It'd be like if you all went out to dinner. There's nothing on behalf of staff between you and the school district.
Well, we just can't talk about specific things.
Now, if you have a real council meeting, that's a whole different thing. But that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing, I've heard mock, I've heard, you know, Airport Heights stuff, I've heard trail. Even that'll be gone because that has a deadline of next week. So, so the difference is, you know, it's like the school board. The school board meets here, but sometimes they meet in the cafeteria over there, you know, depending on what the topic is and how many people show up. And so you have to decide is, are you having a real meeting? And if so, what's your action items on behalf of the city? Or is it just a mock meeting where it's sort of kind of like ceremonial and it doesn't require anything of staff, no advertising, no recording, no nothing? That's bad grammar.
And it doesn't change anything if we were to have public comments? If, if like, because the idea to me is like to get the students involved, ask questions, have public comment, does that change anything?
No, because you're not taking action or anything. You don't have anything actionable.
So maybe it's, go ahead, yes.
Could we, could we like do a mock recreation of a past meeting where we have the minutes?
Oh, dear Lord.
I mean, it's just an idea because it's already happened. We can all pretend that we're voting, but it's already happened. And if, so it would be like just a repeat of, nothing changes. It's just an idea. That would make it, that would make it follow the prescribed format. You have a start, a middle, and the end, you have all the parts that are in the normal agenda. But it's, you know, and it could be something that we could choose a meeting that something fun happened at, you know, or something interesting. It's just an idea.
I would just think, like a couple of topics where there was some, something, it'd be some good discussion, and you would have like a resolution or a vote or something, so that way people could see what, how this goes down.
If we do vote, if we vote on something, we could do something where we have census.
I mean, make something up, you know, like, or put in a septic system and whatever.
I'm hearing that you, I have at least four people. So if I were to be able to do something at the school, you're interested and would be able to attend, but it depends on, you're more open to it being more of a, either a work session or a town hall? You don't want to go to a town hall.
I am very interested in the education, very interested in that. I, unless there were no strings attached to the city staffers and we were there just running through, there were no strings attached for the city staffers, I would want it to be more about, you know, here's the process and here's what it looks like. For example, if you wanted it to be real, if you wanted it to be something, the students could come up with things, local things, that they're like, oh, what is this? What is that? You could bring the collective, us and other people, school board members, whatever, where we form a kind of council and we run through the quorum and the agenda and, you know, make it seem formal, this is what it looks like in most of these meetings. You know, that's interesting. It's a discussion on what they want. And then when they, if students want to make public comments, you can say, yes, that's a great public comment. Let's now actually submit a public comment somewhere. You know what I mean, like, follow, you know what I mean? There's a, there's a way to have this look like model, how we do things up here without creating burden on anybody's staff. It's just our time and, you know, walk away with ideas for those people who are on those boards already and walk away with students knowing a little bit more about how to get their ideas forward. That's the way.
You know, be a good on this, like these houses that we've done lately. Do a fake house, have somebody come in, be the fake owner of the house, where they could talk to the council.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
And get two people, one for and one against, and then you can have a vote afterwards and declare the take your structure.
So, so there's a reason, you know, and I'd love to help out when I can because I think even, these students are a lot, a lot more tech savvy, so I can even use instant voting up on the big trays. But the reason I'm an advocate for mock is because unless we work out the stuff, we're on school property, which is, you know, a secure area, which means if I have a real meeting, we have to open it up to the real public, which means, next thing you know, I have to have security, I have to have clearance. You know, if it's just students and or teachers or a class, that's a whole different thing versus the school district. I'm sure if we contact them and said, hey, can we hold a city council meeting over in the cafeteria? Sure, they would allow after hours, but then the question is, do the kids show up? And that's what you really want. And then, I don't have kids, but, but I can't imagine youth wanting to like come talk about a dilapidated house. But there are issues because you have experts in the classroom, you know, that know what youth, what cares or matters to them that they would debate, if you will, as a topic. And so that's, you know, I mean.
I definitely wouldn't have it after hours. Like, I wouldn't, that's why I was thinking like 11:30-ish where it's timed around where it's a class period.
Yeah, but you can't have the public come into a school during, like, when kids are at the school.
It's a little more difficult. I mean, look at what we had to go through with just the senator and, and, you know, their visits. I mean, it's the same thing. We all have to get checked in, they have to be escorted, you're, you, you, you know, you're, we have to allow open to everyone. I mean, I've got folks that, that have trespass warnings against the school that because we're having a public meeting, there's an issue there. And so we just have to make sure that we're cottoned as in of those type issues.
So you're thinking better to frame it as a, a mock, yeah.
And then get what volunteers can show and, and, you know, and, in fact, I mean, one of the topics could be, again, I, I don't want to set a firestorm over there, but you got to figure out, because I was about to say, well, let them, you know, pick, you know, what they want to have for lunch on Fridays. You know, oh no, you set a, I don't want to get the cafeteria workers upset. There could be a lot, but something like that, topics.
You need to meet with the, probably the civics teachers or something to get a, a big interest. I think you've got a sport up here that would support doing whether it's a mock.
You'd be able, yeah. Would you come over on a midday?
Yes, he would.
I feel like you just got a consensus. The majority of the council that you could show up, but we've got to, I need to.
I think what you're interested in is, like, making it official business makes it more like the kids' input will matter more. But it doesn't have to be official in any way for their input to matter in a real way. And it's just, it's just how you frame it.
Yeah, okay.
And I think it'd be way cool to have a modeling of how quorum decisions are made.
See, this is where I, I hear, I like this potential possibility, but I was hoping to actually get real feedback from the students on maybe some things that would be applicable to them, such as parks and things like that. That's, that's, I like the idea of the mock, but, you know, if you're a youth, you know, a young person that, and besides parks, I haven't really come up with anything else that they might be interested in, probably not wastewater, sorry, Ralph, but, you know.
Some of the best fishing over there.
Businesses.
But, but the reality is, I mean, with QR codes itself, you can get feedback. Staff could create a custom feedback QR code so that everyone that participated, we know that they would be youth. We just got to make sure that the school's okay because whenever we go, we do surveys and data, we got to get their permission. So we just have to make sure, students, students, once you're on their, their school property, the rules are a little different. And so, but we can figure out how to make it happen.
So, so, all right, so let me bring some stuff back to you guys in two weeks because maybe what we end up doing is there is some sort of a, and part of this is meet and greet the council, right? And so they can see what it looks like for a council meeting. But I like the idea of having, you know, the information up about where we're at with the master plan of the parks. I think they can probably keep the survey open for the Airport Heights Park, maybe even a couple more, if we were able to do something in like a month or so, so that there's still an opportunity for them to feel like, hey, this is cool. I got to see sort of a mock council meeting or something like that, but then still have real, still get real information. Nothing that we're voting on, but updates on some things.
And maybe, maybe there's topics the school district would like to know about.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, stay tuned, and I will bring back some potential dates and some ideas. Sounds good, a couple of weeks.
Do you want to put a marker for?
Yes, will you add that, Ms. Macy, in another work session? All right, so then the next item of business is number seven, and this is the Special Events Committee presentation. We wanted to talk about this in the work session tonight, so we have a little bit more time than just the actual council report out meeting. I think Macy has here on a thumb drive some highlights that we were able to get put together of the numbers for the July, our July Jubilee that we had, celebrating North Bend's birthday. So, let me go ahead, and Counselor Hamilton, feel free to jump in here.
Oh, yeah.
He's gonna, lots of jumping in.
On his birthday?
Yes, happy birthday.
That's the best time to jump in.
Cookies over there. So, so yeah, so one of the things that we wanted to kind of share with you is this year, since July Jubilee had been in hiatus and it was coming out of the pandemic, as you know, we are eligible for the $3,000 grant through the visitor convention bureau. And so we have a slide here that's going to talk about that. But, but just as long as we're here, take a look at that photo there of the 5K walk. That was one of our most. That was one of our most, um, I think it was a really well-attended event and people had a really good time. This was put on by Jewel Insurance, Ashworth donated the snacks, um, a lot of businesses donated prizes. And it was such a fun, I think I went to almost every single event that weekend. And you can see my dog got to even run in the 5K down there. Um, it was really neat, it was one of my favorite events because it was such a variety of ages that were participating too. Um, and so that is the picture from that. So on the next slide, we'll go ahead and break down some things here. Um, you can see on Friday, we had the kickoff with, um, there was about 50 people there at the cake cutting. Uh, we had our, um, our honored citizens award there, so they were all able to show up. Um, there was 272 people who participated in the sip and stroll, um, which was actually a pretty decent number, I guess. I asked our Main Street manager what sip and stroll numbers are usually like. And during the summertime, they're not like necessarily as high as like maybe the fall and the spring. So that was still really well-attended for being, um, summer. Um, on Saturday, the July Jubilee jaunt was 64. That's, again, a pretty good number for having an event kind of come back for the first time. The disc golf tournament had 43 people. Um, there was the cornhole tournament over at the back alley. And there was six teams that participated with 12 players. Um, we don't have the number count, um, of the people that actually came to watch the back alley. Um, but that was a business that was pretty active that day. Um, who in the room, in this room, raise your hand if you guys went over to the mall that Saturday for July Jubilee? I know Matt and I were both there, anybody else were there? Uh, yeah, it was, I wish you could have seen it. Like I keep telling everybody, like it reminded me of like 1986 at the Pony Village Mall. It was the busiest that I had seen in so long. There was 500 plus people there. They had fishing outside, um, they had, um, like, yeah.
Monster trucks.
Was that?
The monster.
The monster trucks were there. It was the mall manager, Simon, I mean, he went all out. Um, and it was, we talked about it in, um, a few of our discussions. It was, you know, you got to work with what you have, right? And we have crazy winds in July and there's just not a lot that you can do with that. So being able to have that be like the center of a lot of the events, um, I think was great. They, um, had pole vaulting inside the mall. And so, um.
They took that for Florence.
Was it?
They took that for Florence.
From Florence did that, yeah. So, um, the people that were involved in the pole vaulting and having at the mall, like again, because you don't have to deal with the wind, were super excited about that. And they're already making plans for what they want to do this year and how they could bring even other kids in from different places. So that was really cool. So, um, so Saturday was a huge success. Um, there was at the Mercy Box Car Celebration of the 75th Anniversary, there was 50 people out there. You had the, um, Oregon Bay Area Beautification Project cleanup. Um, they were able to get, is that, um, is that three cubic yards of debris? Is that how you read that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so those were the, some of the activities on Saturday. Sunday was the historic walk, um, down with Dick Wagner, um, the softball game, um, with 80 people. In fact, that was, uh, a really special day. Um, not because we got to see all these wonderful players, um, from the city of North Ben and our council, um, but because, uh, we also raised $2,600 for the Ian Spalding Scholarship Foundation. Um, Opry was on several, you know, of the nights and matinees and they had a total of 550 people that attended those. Um, on the next slide, um, we broke down then for the visitor convention bureau, how we spent that $3,000. Um, so a lot of it was just on some, um, you know, uh, really advertising from flyers to the inserts in the waterboard. Uh, we did some boosting of the Facebook page, radio ads. Um, there was a happy birthday banner. Um, I will ask our Main Street manager, how many places did you carry that banner to? There was, there was a banner that showed up at a lot of the different places and we got great photos with it.
I would say about six.
Yeah, six different places that the banner got to show up at. Um, some little treats for the Mercy Box Car Celebration and of course, like some, um, uh, trophies and, and things like that for the honored citizens. So this has already been submitted so that we were able to close out that grant with the visitor convention bureau. On the next slide, um, just some information here that the logo was placed on packaging of, um, the cookies. And we wanted to show the visitor convention bureau since we, we received that grant because it had been in hiatus. So it was all about kind of like getting it back out into the community. So we showed, um, some information here about, you know, the, the radio advertising that we did, um, how the logo was on the honored citizens award, um, and, um, and the event banners and so forth. All right, on the next slide, this shows you some information about the reach that we had. Um, you really can see that, um, Facebook, um, is still really active. They can see when they do a post that it reached 9,542 people, how many people clicked on for the event response or said that they were interested in the July Jubilee. So they might, it might show like, hey, here's this event, you click on it, this is your interest, they're able to capture that on the July Jubilee page and on the city of North Ben Facebook page. And then with the QR codes too, you're able to see how, like, when, if I'm reading that number correctly. So for example, that you scan the QR code, 267 people then went to the city website with that to get more information. So, um, you know, I think the city of North Ben just really prides themselves in trying to put, disseminating information out in a variety of ways, whether it be streaming our council meetings like this, making sure that we have information on our city page and what's, and then the same information will also put out on social media. So we just try to share it out in all those different ways. Um, on the next page, this was the thank you letter that our Main Street manager had, um, crafted up for the visitor and convention bureau, letting them know that we were appreciative of the, um, of the grants. And I think that's the last slide on here, right? So, um, so, um, Councilor Hamilton and the committee and I met, Special Events Committee, because we were, um, assembled to have some very, a very specific scope of what we were supposed to do. And initially that scope was to find out like, should we bring July Jubilee back? And that decision was made to yes, to, to go ahead and try it again for this year, see where we're at, um, see if there was public interest. And then, um, put together an event that had, um, some community, uh, members that were on the Special Events Committee and find people in the community that can do as much self-sustainable, um, events as possible. And, you know, um, in the Special Events Committee recap that we had last week, I know like Jewel Insurance was a perfect example of a business that wanted to participate in July Jubilee and just was able to put on events almost from like top to bottom, you know, by themselves. Some of the other places that put on events needed a little bit more assistance from the volunteers. Um, but it was overall, um, something that, um, really for a first time back, maybe a couple of little bumps of like, we looked at like, you know, would we have the honored citizens again in grand circle? Maybe not, maybe there's a better place to have it so you don't have to contend with so much wind. Um, do we want to figure out a way to coordinate dates so that we can have the car show? Like there was a couple of things that we heard over and over again, like, gosh, it just didn't seem like the July Jubilee without the car show. Um, and so, um, you know, so there are a few things that we learned from it. But for the most part, it was really well-received, got lots of good, um, feedback. The, um, the places or the different kind of groups that held the events, for example, um, the disc golf course or disc golf tournament, that was put on by a local disc golfer, Derek Ton, um, and a volunteer group. Um, they were, you know, we were like, what would you do differently? They're like, we just, we would just, you know, try to recruit more people, maybe start recruiting a little bit earlier. But it was another, um, item for kind of the first time back to have a tournament like that. Um, was still pretty well-attended for, um, being in hiatus for about four years. Councilor Hamilton, what am I missing here?
I think you hit it all really well. Um, yeah, I mean, the Special Events Committee came together and with the help of Stephanie and a few others helped put this on. And, uh, it went, we got it off the ground and it went fairly, fairly well, so I would call it a success.
Do you have information on the city costs, like how much it costs a city?
Yeah, um, so I don't know if I'm able to ask you the city reporter or the Main Street manager if they have any of those numbers handy. We have the $3,000, um, visitor convention bureau money. Then we had $5,000 that was earmarked from, um, our revenue sharing, so that was $8,000. And, um, that's, I'm not missing any other buckets of money, am I? It was about it.
Well, it wasn't covered by the $5,000 because it just seems like there were, there were probably a lot of events. Were there permits, were there extra staff time not accounted for?
Some of the, if you remember, some of the, um, the, the $3,000 couldn't be used for staff time. So the five, yeah. The $5,000, um, some of that money was used for a part-time person, um, to help Stephanie Wilson out. Um, and so that was, um, a portion of that money. And there was no permits that cost money.
No.
Should there have been, I mean, were there any risks because we didn't have funding for it that we were taking?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, historically we would have waited, just a little bit.
Permit anyways?
Yeah, yeah.
There was some additional staff time that wasn't, that wasn't part of the $5,000.
Yeah.
I can work on those numbers in the back.
Okay. So.
I suspect were those definitely possible? I mean, because I mean, Ralph was out there a lot.
It's, I want to know that.
And so those are some sort of volunteer hours, if you will.
Yeah, I want to know how much.
Yeah, I photographed Ralph just about every time I saw them somewhere.
Yeah.
So, I did deliberately.
It's just a, it's good to know, have some idea because if we want to carry it forward in a, in a way that truly is sustainable, it's now's the time to look and make choices if we need to.
Yeah.
Does it make sense to even have the Special Events Committee still?
Well, so that brings us to part two of this discussion is, so that was the task, right? Was to have a, you know, have this committee, um, we ended up, um, making the decision to bring back the July Jubilee. We had it and then the point was that come December, September, we were going to recap and kind of see where we're at with numbers and everything. Um, and knowing this, um, the Main Street Board met and they, um, they were, you know, um, had their own event, they had the sip and stroll, um, as part, kind of part of the July Jubilee weekend. And so their board met and they had a discussion and they made a proposal to the Special Events Committee. And they gave that proposal to the Special Events Committee when we met last Wednesday. And, um, their recommendation was, is they saw how they, that, um, I believe, from what I understand, like the discussion with the board is that they saw the value in having the Main Street Board, in having a July Jubilee. And wanted to present to the Special Events Committee, um, to have a relationship where the July Jubilee would be, I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, but maybe housed like kind of under the umbrella of Main Street with, um, as a subcommittee of their promotions department. Now, there was some conversation around this because there are very specific ways that Main Street Boards are set up. And, um, and our Main Street Board Manager or.
Director.
Director is here that could maybe answer this if I'm not saying it correctly. But they did check into this to see, could the Main Street have a subcommittee that is a, for promotions that could help assist in, um, again, kind of be in the umbrella of the Main Street? And if there's.
I think the missing piece, we just want to say out loud is Main Street is a specific, much smaller area than the whole town.
However.
So that's the rub.
Yes. However, the question when they kind of went up the third chain of command and asked like, can you have a promotional event that would be, goes beyond the boundaries of those? And I believe the answer was yes, right?
Yes, correct. Uh, we did present this to the Oregon State Coordinator and since it's a sub, subcommittee under our promotions committee, our main focus area for all of the events and programs that we facilitate within our program would be within our boundaries. Um, but the, the state is aware that we would be offering a subcommittee for July Jubilee and you would not be permitted to keep it within the downtown district. So we could still have it at the mall or have it at Clyde Allen and whatnot, so.
So in this discussion, when it was presented to the Special Events Committee, we kind of asked some questions. And, um, it was, you know, it's, it wouldn't be something where the Main Street Board was putting on the July Jubilee. In fact, the same people that are like currently on the Special Events Committee, because really what kind of the recommendation that the Special Events Committee would be making to this council is to sunset that committee. They have the task, we brought it back, we're reviewing it and sunset it. But there was still a lot of interest of the people who are on the Special Events Committee to maybe move on over and be part of this Main Street Subcommittee, Promotions Committee.
Correct, and with that, uh, Main Street would not require or, um, request for any of our logo or anything like that to be on it. We're basically showing a support and a housing of it. They can use our facility to meet at, um, our technical support. They would have a main moderator for the July Jubilee, like a steering team. And then that person would communicate, work out all the, the part that takes the time and logistics. They would work all that out and then be like, hey, uh, you know, visitor center coordinator, can you file this permit that has to come from the city? So it would actually require less staff time on my end and they would still be their own group. And it would not require any Main Street, uh, volunteers to participate unless they wanted to join the committee. So, a steering team, sorry, join the steering team.
So what I'm hearing is that there is a way to, to leverage the resources in Main Street for this event, but have it across the city and that is okay legally. That, um, there's a way to have it within the Main Street Visitor Bureau, which is all you, the board's on yours, yeah. Um, to make it feasible for you to carry this on into the future with some funding from our, like, I, I think if we were to agree with that funding, you still need a little something.
Correct, so we did, um, going back to our budget season, we did put in a budget line for July Jubilee of the $10,000. And so the moderator for the steering team would, um, allocate and coordinate the budget with myself since it is my budget responsibility line. And so that communication would be key, but it would be those dollars. Main Street is not adding any of our funding or our raised revenue for July Jubilee.
Yeah.
Where there's like a support team, but we're not funding the program, the event or the program, so.
So it sounds like we have two things, whether or not to sunset the Special Events Committee and the other is to, um, sort of presume that we're going to continue funding July Jubilee with that.
Well, it's in the budget for this year. So it would be in our next budget discussion that we would decide that, yeah. Councilor Hamilton, do we miss anything?
You guys killed it again, a tarp pole.
So we wouldn't have to present, kind of, you would, you, the, how would we hear about the Special Events stuff?
I'm, I would think that when Main Street would give updates, we could probably ask under the promotional, the Promotions Committee of Main Street, we could get updates then and then.
Correct, so, um, all of our departments within the city, um, we do our administration reports. So I've already been adding July Jubilee updates through our administration report. Uh, someone from the steering team would be able to come, like maybe once a year annually and present to the council. Um, or myself, I'd be happy to help with that as well. So you guys would still get an in-person presentation if that's something you would like to have. Um, but it would nonetheless be in the administration report as well.
Okay.
One more question.
Yeah.
How many of the people who participated in organizing their events would do it again?
All of them, we had a verbal commitment from all of them. Are you talking about the, the people who held the events?
Yeah.
Yeah, all of them.
The people who are not city staff or not.
And then, yeah. And then all the people on the Special Events Committee. I agree, I would like to be part of the Promotions Committee for them, under the Main Street umbrella. Um, and then, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't, besides thanking, you know, Stephanie and Melissa Rice for their work. Um, Barb Dunham, as a, as a citizen here in our town, carried a lot of weight of July Jubilee and her knowledge and her expertise and, you know, just the historical information that she had about it and knew how to call and make things happen. She has also agreed, um, to.
That's why Ralph said all the things.
Yeah, so to, um, to tap on that, yes, Barb Dunham was a key role. She has many years of knowledge and she volunteered a lot of hours for this year's event. She has committed her time and her knowledge to moving forward with the steering team. And so we do have that commitment for her. We also, um, we had a events survey as a wrap-up. And everyone who held events like the run and the, um, cornhole and the disc golf, they all gave event feedback. And it was all positive and they felt it was a success and they were already looking and planning for next year. So to answer your question, yes, the support is there. We're, Main Street is just giving it a home so it can move out from how it is currently.
You feel supported, you feel supported with your constraints, with your, with your legal constraints, with your staff's constraints?
Yeah, I feel like it's a really great move. And the Main Street Board did vote on this and they approved it back in July. So you do have the full support of Main Street and myself, yes.
Excellent, it's important move.
Thank you. Question, any other questions from the council?
Do we have to do something to get the Special Events Committee off?
Yeah, so if we, is it, that might be a question for our attorney. I think the way that we set it up is it would sunset after our task was completed and the last thing that we had was to. And the last thing that we had was to evaluate how it went. So I don't know if we need to vote on it being sunsetted or it's. Is it sunsetting, I guess is the question. Do we have to do something? Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, hello, good evening. Um, yeah, I don't have the resolution on my, um, on hand, but we can take a look at that and figure out what, if anything, the council needs to do to act on that to, to, to keep it going.
We did. Is that something we could do under other business tomorrow night?
Oh, yeah.
Or is it like if you, if you were to look at that and we needed to add something, that's something we could vote on tomorrow night if we needed to?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, next, um, that would take us to eight for review the city council agenda. I'm gonna actually ask the city administrator to kinda jump in here and walk us through tomorrow night's meeting. Quickly.
So we have, uh, two ceremonial items. One will be 15 years of service for Derek Wyndham. He's our engineer coordinator. We also have a 50th, uh, anniversary proclamation, um, for a portion of the Coast Guard, which is specifically, um, the air station North Bend. And, um, Madam Mayor, I have a large print copy for you.
Thank you.
Um, because we've put a lot on that one page.
Okay.
Um, we.
Sixteen font?
We're also, I don't know that I went that big. But, um, and we, uh, we'll have a representative, um, in blues from the Coast Guard here tomorrow.
Oh, great.
And then, um, we'll also have a, uh, a city T-shirt, um, uh, to present. They're only allowed, uh, federal employees are only allowed something of $20 or less value.
Yeah.
And so, uh, I told him he's, uh, he's okay. But, uh, the air station itself, um, I will tell you very quietly, they sunsetted, um, uh, the, um, the sector North Bend and as they have been doing things, but, um, their org chart fascinates me. Um, under the consent calendar, uh, you've got, um, because, uh, we didn't have all the meetings, uh, we punted some. So you have your July meeting, uh, bills here. You have, uh, appointment to the homeless advisory board, which is something that you all should chat about because you have one position and you have three applicants. And so, um. And so.
Do you want me to speak to that now?
Probably, cause you appointed, you appointed two. One had to drop for personal reasons. And so you have three and, um, you, not that it's an official position, but you may wanna make a backup like, like.
That's what I was gonna ask is I have, I have, um, been looking at the applications and then I had, um, spoke to like one of the applicants. And I thought if, because there, I had somebody in mind that I think would be a really good, um, applicant that I wanted to appoint, but it would like to have a backup.
Alternate.
An alternate, yeah, an alternate. If that, if it's set up that we could do it that way.
Well, Kuzbe is doing it and, you know, I wasn't sure how that occurred, so why can't we?
I, I, I would have, if we're talking about this now, I don't think that's appropriate because.
It absolutely is.
And if they're not there, if they resign, whatever, then you re-advertise. Let's use this work session time to do that now. We don't, I don't think we need to pull it from the consent calendar, but that's what the work session is for is, is hopefully you guys got your packets before and you looked at the applications and you have, I, um, have. I understand what you're saying. Okay. So do you, so let's see, what would be the best way to do this? Um, I would like to, I'm just gonna tell you that one of the people that I've talked to is Ron Moore. Um, and I think he'd be a really good applicant for that. I'd like, my recommendation would be to appoint him. Um, and then to be honest, I wouldn't, I'd be okay if we just listed, um, both of the others as, as alternates. What is the function of an alternate then?
That's a good question. There's, so, so the way Kuzbe has been doing it, if one of their voting members doesn't show up, they've been slipping that person in. Now according to our contract, it says that we're supposed to have two persons. So there is nothing that is official that says there's an alternate. But since it's an advisory board, who cares? That's my take on it.
Who's our member now? Who's the one member now?
I have to go back. You all appointed that member two months ago?
We had appointed two people and then one person had, um, some, um, matters that was not gonna be able to have them make the month, their, their monthly meetings.
I think they'll come back at some point, but not right now.
This is what I was thinking. If, if, if you were in consensus with me, I would appoint Ron Moore. Asked, um, the other two applicants to be alternates so that they can, and then they can. They can go to the meetings anyways, but they would go to the meetings and then be up to date. So if something goes south and there's another opening, the other people are ready to go.
Then you're gonna have alternate one and alternate two.
Okay. Do you guys have a preference as alternate one or alternate two?
I think Sharon would be a very good alternate.
Okay.
Ron Moore. I, I agree with Ron Moore as the appointment.
I agree with Ron Moore too.
Okay. So if you guys, we can do Ron Moore as the appointment, Sharon Claiborne as the, um.
Alternate one.
Alternate one and Chris.
Is alternate two.
Alternate two. And I'm gonna, I would really, I'm gonna, we can speak to them and encourage them to go and, or at least listen to all the other meetings and participate.
Well, like, don't, do we need to do something for, for direction about what we mean by alternates?
Um, no.
Staff follows up.
Okay.
Yeah, staff follows up. We, we, we get them acclimated, all of that. And so.
Yeah, I like that. All one, all two.
Yeah. So we're, so we're choosing Ron Moore. We're leaving it in the consent calendar because we're using the work session to discuss this. And if you're okay with this consensus, then that would be the recommendation.
It should have been a work session agenda item.
I mean, it is, it is.
It is. You're discussing it now.
I got it, I got it.
Yes. You, you can discuss anything on the consent, what you're doing.
Yeah, that's true.
So what we're, so we're possibly agreeing to tomorrow, what we're gonna vote on tomorrow is Ron is.
We're not vote, we're just gonna approve the consent account. We are agreeing now.
Yeah. So all we're going to do as staff is we're going to modify the agenda. So after Ron, it'll say, you know, appointment. And then under, after Sharon, it'll say alternate one, under Spade, it'll say alternate two. And then when you all take your vote to approve the consent, it's a done deal and we move on. That's, that's why we have the work sessions. We, we, we get it done.
I just wanted the order to be spoken aloud one more time.
And that's house.
One more time.
Yeah, you're good. Okay. So then you have contract for library services. Um, this is a matter of, uh, housekeeping. Our librarian is here. If you, uh, need to present or have any questions or if there's anything out of the unusual from last year, but.
This is just annually, right?
Housekeeping, yeah.
Yep. All right. The next is sidewalk replacement on Monroe Street. Same thing. You have your public works director here, but it's just, uh, because of, uh, the amount, if I'm not mistaken. So you have to prove that because it's over the threshold. Then, uh, any questions for, on that sidewalk? All right, from there, public comment. All right, then this is where you move on to, uh, a resolution. And so this seems a little complicated.
It does.
But you have a resolution that, um, if you're comfortable moving forward with the enterprise fleet management, you would actually authorize, um, the city administrator to go forth and sign everything. Um, everything gets blessed back and forth between the city attorney and, and enterprise before I sign it. From there, if you approve that, we're going to do a public hearing, um, with changes to the fiscal 2024, 25 budget for fleet management services. And so, for instance, folks contacting us, are you increasing the actual budget, changing things? Um, we, we actually have to put in the line items in there. And so we have to, anytime the budget is, um, uh, alter, changed, modified by a certain amount, we have, uh, by 10%. Um, we have to bring it forth. And so you'll see there on page 50, um, and then the amounts that we've already published online and in the newspaper. Uh, in fact, I think Ralph's already gotten one phone call about the budget, which, um, uh, our finance director's like, we actually got a call about it? And he answered the questions very well. I might add, so I was, uh, we were impressed. Um, and then after the public hearing, then you have a resolution that would approve the changes to the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget for the fleet management. And so that is spelled out. If you go to page 51, it shows exactly what we're doing, how we're doing it. Our finance director will be here tomorrow to literally walk you through. But it shows that the resolution 3359 will result in changes to the wastewater fund, gas tax fund, equipment and construction fund and general fund, increasing the total adopted budget by $85,714. Um, it shows, um, how we're adding proceeds from vehicle sales, um, to the wastewater fund, um, and to the gas tax fund and to the general fund. It shows allocating additional debt service to the wastewater fund. It shows removing capital outlay. So all of that, um, shows you that it is a overall net change of, hmm.
Eighty-five.
Yes, yes. $85,714. Yes. By the time we move everything around within to accomplish this enterprise agreement.
You're gonna spend a quarter million dollars. The only thing that you're gonna increase our budget is $85,000.
Uh huh, yeah. Because you already have, uh, proposed planned budgeted vehicles spread throughout. But we're then going to have net savings of those and other things of that nature, yes. And then we're going to have proceeds of the money coming back in. Yeah.
I think it's kinda CS to, to push this on us on one day and want us to pass it, looking at all these graphs and everything else.
You can wait two weeks. Doesn't matter. You wanna push it off two weeks?
And, and, and they, they say this is a lease payment. Okay, if we make the five years with the lease payments, we walk away from this, do we own those vehicles?
Yeah, absolutely.
Then it's not really a lease.
Well, it, it is a lease, it's a hybrid lease under, under the law as to, it's a modified hybrid lease. And yes, it's not a traditional lease where you're restricted by miles. You're not restricted by the length of the lease, things of that. You can actually get out at any time, um, and, and there's a make-hold. The difference is, is that we're spreading our costs through the lease agreement, which is the legal mechanism, uh, to accomplish that.
That could be a five-year payoff.
Well, but it would continue to go on, you know.
If you roll it over again, yes.
Well, yeah, because you would wanna continue to keep the, the lease, you wanna keep your vehicles. And so in, in cities that I've had, it's just perpetual. You just continue to, you know, keep moving forward to keep the fleet updated. Cause otherwise your fleet will just age and you won't be able to sell them. When you look at, at what we've been selling our, our vehicles for, it, it's been a joke.
Yeah, but you know, you know, I buy the cell cars every once in a while. Let's take a look like that Ram 1500. They bought it. They ran it for 50,000 miles. They sold it for $1,300 less than what they bought it for.
Yes. And I can show you a city in Georgia that did that with Ford F-50s, 150s and sold them every three years and made a profit on it. That's because what I can buy it for versus what you can buy it for is totally not the same.
I understand that. I understand that. Whatever, I don't care.
Did you wanna move it to two weeks? This is, I thought we would. I'm comfortable if we wait two weeks, if we wanna look at it a little bit closer.
Yeah, I would feel better about it. Yeah, call, call any of those other cities that, that have the programs. Do your own research. But yes, what we can buy them under contract and then operate them versus value, absolutely.
And that's just because of like the government purchasing agreements?
Absolutely.
Well, it's just a huge buyer that.
Yeah. When you're buying two million cars, you can do this and get them faster, more efficiently and everything. I mean, I, I, I've been at three other cities now that have done this effectively. In fact, even a very, very small city. Um, Kuzbe is doing it right now. Um, there's other right around here, um, that, that, in fact, there's another government, either is it the Waterport or SWAT? There's another one that has it.
Well, let's just pull, let's.
Or maybe it's the hospital.
Let's bump six and seven to the next two weeks of that.
It's a lot of information to digest in a short time.
And it's eight, two, right? Six, seven and eight, two. Cause there's not like a time limit, right?
Um, we may have to re-advertise is all.
Okay.
So.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's the will of the council. We can pull those. Six, seven, eight. And, uh, I'll let your finance director know we're holding two weeks.
Okay.
All right, um, number nine is street paving. Ralph, you wanna address that? It's 15, your packet.
Very simply, this, we talked about this year on combining our wastewater projects because our major, um, paving project was, got rescheduled for next year. That was actually Pony Slue Road. And since we didn't get the project out in a timely manner, we'd have been going through school district. Or once schools were open, we'd still be working today. So we combined and on our priority streets with projects, we were tearing up the street anyway with wastewater. Grant Street, we did all 900 feet, uh, sewer replacement. And we're looking to, we did our sewer replacement, tore up half the road, um, almost 14 feet of the 34-foot wide roadway. Just doing that sewer replacement. And now we're looking to pave it back. Obviously, um, we could have just repaired the street, but in the shape of, I don't know if any of you had driven Grant Street prior to that. It had, um, like, not all the streets in Airport Heights, but there was three of them that are in pretty sad shape. Grant Street was one of them. We've received quotes. We sent out quotes to six local contractors. We got quotes back from four of them and one from Roseburg. Johnson Rock was a little bitter, so we recommend Ward and, and ease the local neighborhood from Virginia to Connecticut's pain after having dealt with a gravel road for a month and a half, a little more than that. Award bid. We're paving it back. Johnson Rock's schedule is end of this month, early October. I've already talked about schedule with the Ward.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, thank you. Nice. That's the last big thing on the agenda for tomorrow evening. We don't have an executive session planned, correct? And, um, I'm guessing when we go down tomorrow with committee reports, you don't need to hear a July Jubilee thing anymore.
Condensed version.
Yeah. Um, okay, so then we have this, we have an urban renewal, no? We do, right? So, Mr. City Administrator, we have a, you are a separate agenda for that tomorrow?
Don't we wanna talk, talk a moment about the, um, letter to Urban Department Transportation?
Yeah. So, but we all, do we wanna go ahead and go through the North and Urban Renewal Agency agenda for tomorrow evening now?
Where am I done with? I, I, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the last 14 on our council agenda.
So currently we're going through the, um, the council meeting, right?
And it's 14.
It's part of it.
It's, it was an update. It's sitting on our desk.
Madam Mayor? Yes. I would like to ask for a Parks Master Plan Steering Committee update report. Okay, I'm gonna put a pin in that for right now. Just one second here. Yours is different than mine.
You gotta update it's sitting on our desk.
That one.
Yeah, that's.
Well, but to conclude, okay, so for the agenda tomorrow meeting, tomorrow night for the agenda.
What team is there doing other, other business?
Other business. Okay. So tomorrow night during the council meeting, number 14, other business is this letter. And, um, to our city administrator, are you looking for feedback right now of the letter? Or you just wanna make sure that the council is in consensus?
We actually have Derek who's going to come up. There's.
Okay.
Two things under other business, so.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will give you the abridged version of this. But, uh, as Councilor Doff alluded to earlier, um, we are looking for some support on a multi-use pathway, approximately 0.35 miles between Florida and Virginia avenues, um, along Ha- Hamilton. Um, and this multi-use pathway, uh, is part of the Pony Creek Greenway Connector, which is a plan that was developed in 1994 and is referenced in the Parks Master Plan. And then the other part of this project is that we'd like to improve the bridge crossing at the high school, um, where that old bridge is. Um, it's in, you know, pretty sad shape and needs some, some, uh, replacement. There's kind of two pathways for this program, um, and we're looking for your support, um, generally to apply for this grant. And, you know, um, we can go forward. I have a meeting with the school district tomorrow. Kinda see where they're at and potentially if it could be a co. Kind of see where they're at and potentially they could be a co-applicant with us. Um, so we have to have some local, some additional local government support. Uh, but there's two pathways here. There's a planning grant, which would cover master planning, preliminary engineering and design. Um, and basically gets us ready to be, ready to build. And we believe this would position us really well for a construction grant in the next biennium. So if the school district can um, wait for that need of replacing that bridge crossing, we would like to go for the planning grant, get this planned out, really detailed out. Um, basically a Pony Creek Greenway refresher. And then the other option is go for the construction grant, it's exactly what it sounds like. We would start, or we'd be on our own for design and um, planning. And so we'd just be kind of going off that 1994 plan. As you know, as I know, uh, things have changed since 1994. I think it'd be in our best interest to go for the planning grant if we have that opportunity. Um, but it is obviously will of the council and we're just looking for your support um, on this letter.
Okay, any questions from the council about this letter?
No.
That sounds great. Okay, so this will be new agenda page for tomorrow night under other business. Okay, that takes care of all the items on the city council meeting. Now we're going to look at the Urban Renewal Agency Agenda.
Yeah, that's pretty simple. Um, we have um, the normal agenda items, but we have the approval of the URA minutes for June 11th, the acknowledgement of the bills for July 2024 and the acknowledgement of the bills for 2020, August 2024. That's the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Um, and so then we would go um, back into the work session and before I adjourn, I'll just make a note that I did hear Councilor Nordoff, she was asking for um, an update on the master plan and we could either send that in as an agenda item for the next council meeting or if there's some abbreviated version of that that the city administrator could give in his report tomorrow evening, we could ask for that then. I don't know what we.
The committee reports. Well, it's not a committee. It's a committee, Master Plan Steering Committee is on the paragraph in the common city website.
Uh, Madam Mayor, despite the five times the city attorney has briefed the council, it is not a council committee. The council member could have requested an agenda item, she chose not to or did not. And so with that, um, the last agenda item is for you to adjourn.
Okay, all right, well, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn the evening, for the evening.